Good morning, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order today. This is our Board of County Commissioners Budget Reconciliation Workshop. And I'll turn the meeting over to Mike Merrill, our county administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. This is the reconciliation workshop, and there are two things that we would like you to act on today. First is the flag list, and we'll go through that in a second. And the other then would be the trim notice, which is required by state law. We did provide you backup materials. They are the same materials that we've presented to you a couple of times recently, so we're not going to go through that budget material. But, Tom, if you could put up the flag list. So, we delivered the flag list to you yesterday after, excuse me, after discussing with each of you individually what your needs were and expectations. So, the flag list constitutes really just your decisions on the remaining unallocated funds after we delivered the recommended budget. And so, on the flag list, you'll see that the funds available are split between the countywide fund and the unincorporated fund. And so, when you are ready to deal with the flag list, I guess you have really three options. You can vote the entire flag list as a whole. You can vote each of the items individually. Or if a commissioner wants to take an item off for a separate vote, you can do that, and then vote the rest of the flag list. So, those are really the three options. So, I think we've reflected here what you've asked. It doesn't mean you can't add additional flagged items, but we wanted to start with a good list. And so, you can see here, each of the items is described and identified in terms of which commissioner asked for them. Total commissioner flagged items in the countywide fund, $3,325, unincorporated area, $717,000. There are two other items that are not flagged items, but they were additional funding requests. One is the Wyomama-Ruskin Transportation Pilot Project, which was funding requested by enterprising Latinas. And that is a $650,000 cost in the unincorporated fund. Hart has been working with the enterprising Latinas, as well as a consultant that they hired through a grant, to help them put together a proposal. My staff did review it, worked with them. I think we're pretty satisfied that the $650,000 gives them a good, solid pilot program to kick this off with. The second funding request, as you know, you were visited by Mark Sharp, is the University Area Circulator Service, which covers the Innovation District up in the Fowler University area. And so, that project really helps facilitate economic development. The enterprising Latina project, I think, really more is in the category of helping low-income deal with costs of getting to and from work, primarily. And so, in a sense, I guess you could say it really is helping on an affordable housing basis, because it's helping folks pay for transportation, which is a huge part of a budget as well. So, when you add up all of the flagged items, you add up the additional funding request items, basically, we're left with $3,925,000 in the countywide fund and $33,000 in the unincorporated fund. You can, as you desire, deal with that remainder. We do have affordable housing staff reports coming to you and children's services staff reports, so you could set those aside until September, deal with it then. But, it's board's pleasure, and we just wanted to present it to you as a starting point. So, with that, I think unless there's questions, we just turn it over to the board for discussion and action.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Merrill. And I'll just add, the service in South County is a circulator service, because it connects to Ruskin and Hillsborough Community College. And so, I just wanted to add those two points, that it is, both of them are great to build ridership in areas where we need to do that. So, okay, so we have quite a few people signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Commissioner Higginbotham.
Thank you. And I had made a request, with all the rain and flooding issues we have out in my area, I've got some areas on my driveway that I need to have filled in. If there's anything left in commissioner request, I'd like to see that addressed, but...
It's about $3 million, right?
Yeah. And that could also address getting some fish in my pond. Now, I'm concerned, when we talk about these requests from the community, the enterprise Latinas, and the one from Mark Sharp, are these recurring budget items?
Well, that's a good question. I should have mentioned that. So, the first one is not recurring, the Ruskin-Wyomama Transportation Pilot Project. The second is actually, they requested $250,000 a year for three years. And so, the $750,000 really represents the full three years. We felt that was necessary in order to incentivize the other donors to complete this project. So, money's coming from FDOT, money's coming from some of the corporate participants up there, and they wanted to just kind of get everything in place. So, that is three years.
Okay. And then, after the three years...
They could come back and ask for more, but...
I'm sure they won't.
No.
And we've seen, and I've seen in my 12 years here now, once something gets in the budget, it usually stays around. On the money for Hart, what is that 2.6 million being used for?
That is some selected routes, although I guess Commissioner Kemp might want to speak to that.
Yes, ma'am.
I think there were some identified routes, but we also, I guess you wanted to give them some flexibility.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'll ask that question.
You're in the queue, but it's a little bit down.
But, I can ask her...
You want to ask her?
You can kind of expand on that.
I can actually make a presentation on some of the priority routes, but last, when I came with this, I really wanted to make sure that it was spent on operations. Again, we had quite a bit of success from the investments we made prior, and I wanted to, that will be, and I can, in a little, if, I could make it now, but I can wait in, if the board wants to see. But, I have, it's basically investments in operations to have more frequency. And to, what we found with the routes that we've done, is that we've had higher ridership on those routes. We've improved ridership, particularly on Route 34. That's Hillsborough Avenue, going through both unincorporated and incorporated county. All the routes identified here, prospectively, and that can come back and be vetted, and of course, there's four members of this board on the Hart board, but have, these four routes all serve in some way, or the four routes that I've identified here for more frequency, all serve both unincorporated and the city of Tampa or the city of Temple Terrace.
What's the increase in ridership in a percentage?
On that one route, we've lost ridership, as has most of the transit agencies across the country. That has, in the most recent kind of watershed study on all that, that has been because there's been less investment in routes. And we at Hart also had to cut routes last year. But, when we invested in a route, like the Hillsborough Avenue route, we actually had, this past month, because I just checked on it, a 28% increase in that one particular route, where we were able to invest. And that's kind of our purest test, because that route didn't change at all, it just got more frequency, which is kind of best practices that are being looked at when you have routes that are successful. Some of the routes I had identified here were routes that were, actually, already have not really met capacity, the buses don't have the capacity to handle the routes.
Okay.
And in our last budget, in our last budget process, we put in two, a little over $2 million for Hart, and that comes back, this is in addition to that money?
No, this is, that was non-recurring dollars last year that we did...
Right. But, is it in the budget this year?
Yes.
So...
This is the 2.3...
No.
No, this is...
This is in addition to the 2.3.
The 2.6 is in addition to that. But, the 2.3 is on another list, if you go into your budget.
Right.
Yeah, it was probably recommended.
Yes. Because it was non-recurring item that we funded last year.
And so, as I said earlier about, you know, Mark Sharp's request, you know, after three years, it's going to show up again. And thus, my concern is that we had what I felt was a non-recurring budget in the last budget, and we have it in again, and now we're here with 2.6. I want to hear what the other commissioners have to say, but I have grave concerns and would like, however we set this up, to at least vote separately on this Hart item.
Okay. So, okay, so let's hear from some other commissioners, and then I'll come back to you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
That was going to be my question. Are we going to vote on these in package? Are we going to vote on them separately? Because I have something to deal with on Hart.
Okay. So, I'm only hearing that this one item, so why doesn't, I know Commissioner Higginbotham wants to also pull this item for separate discussion, so we can approve the rest of the list and just pull that item for discussion.
Include flagged items minus the Hart item.
Second.
Okay. Is that...
Well, yeah, but I want to discuss Hart.
Yeah. Okay. So, we do have a motion and a second to approve the flag list, pulling the, for separate discussion, the 2.6, and you still have the floor.
We're going to vote first, or what?
No, we're in discussion.
Mine is going to be on Hart. We're just going to pull...
Okay. Okay. So, I'll come back to you. So, is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I guess where I'm not clear is, as the motion stands, what would that mean for that, you know, roughly $3.9 million surplus line item?
It doesn't include that. It's just the flagged items.
It would be 3.9 minus the 2.6 right now.
Okay. Because one of my...
No, 3.3, 3.325. I'm not including the additional.
Oh, I'm sorry. 3.325, and we're minus the 2.6. We're approving everything but the 2.6 right now.
Not the additional funding requests or the affordable housing. We can just address that.
Just the flagged items. So, you're not even wanting to deal with the community requests at this point? Just the commissioner flagged items?
Just for this motion, then we can address those.
Okay. So, I do have one question for Mr. Merrill. I know we're going to take up the Hart item separately, but for the remaining commissioner flagged items, are any of those recurring dollars?
That's the one, the Mark Sharp?
No, that's a community one.
Oh, the flagged items.
Yeah, the commissioner flagged items.
I don't, I don't think so, no.
So, they're all one-time dollars?
I think so. I mean, commissioners can clarify their own flags, but I think they're all one-time.
Okay. I'm comfortable with the motion on the floor, and I'll be supporting it then.
Okay. Anyone else? We've got a lot of speakers, but I'm not sure everybody, I think a lot of people want to speak to the polled item. So, Commissioner Chris, do you want to speak to the motion? Okay. The flagged items or the polled item?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to anything right now.
Okay. So, if everybody can just undo your button...
I have a question.
Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
To the items, the commissioner items and the community item, this is being funded by money that was created by the increase in property values. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have any money that's parked? And I'm just concerned about with the Homestead tax exemption on the ballot in November, and my feeling is it will pass. Would we be better served to keep this money in reserve and finding monies that have been parked, if you will? I know we had something set aside a couple of years ago that was in, it was a capital expenditure, it was maybe related to parks. I don't remember all the details, and it might have been something that Commissioner White had. And I don't know if that money's being used, if that could be diverted there, or is that money spoken for? Do you know?
I'm sorry. What was that? I missed it. I heard my name, but I missed...
We were talking behind your back. It seems to me we had some money parked. It was several million dollars. That, I'm asking, has that money been used? And it was maybe for capital expenditures and parks and rec, rather than use this excess money. If there's money that isn't being used, could it be utilized for these commissioner items?
It is all accounted for, if I may, since Commissioner Higginbotham asked. We just approved a rezoning the day before yesterday on Riverview Drive Park on the Alify River. That project is well on its way. We're far along on some field improvements out in our neck of the woods, in fact, at Keith Waller, Owens Pass.
So, it's been used.
Pretty far along on projects that, those dollars are pretty well spoken for.
I have no other questions.
The only parked dollars that I'm aware of are the parked, using the term loosely, is the money, the BP money that was set aside for the ferry project. It's the only thing I'm aware of that would qualify for that kind of designation is parked. It's not been actually, some of it's been appropriated for some specific services, but most of it is just being held back until the ferry project is more mature, I guess.
Going into the future, I won't be here, of course, but we may want to look, when we're doing flagged items, at some of this money that's not being utilized, that could be set aside, and this could then be set aside in reserves. But, I don't have any other questions right now.
I think he brings up a good point, though. All the flagged items we have from last year and money requests, was all that money spent? I mean, is it being carried over? You know, that type of thing?
No, it's not being carried over.
Okay. But, that's always a good point. So, we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Chris, to approve the flagged items, with the exception of the item for Hart, the 2.6 million. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Higginbotham and Kemp voted no.
Okay. And now, we are on the polled item. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our service as chairman of Hart, chairperson of Hart, and I've said since the time I've been there, that I feel that the responsibility of the funding of Hart, which is woefully low and antiquated, as far as I'm concerned, compared to other agencies our size throughout the state and the country, is bad. But, I've also said that the responsibility of raising funds for Hart lies within the Hart board, and that is because the mere fact is that they would have to make the decision to look at how they would raise funds that are dedicated to Hart. And that is through increasing the millage. I've said that, and I continue to say that. But unfortunately, we just haven't gotten to that point yet. I feel that that should be the opportunity where it should happen. Of course, the process would be that if Hart's board decided to increase the, it has to come here. This board would have to approve it and put it on the ballot, of course. But, that hasn't happened yet. Hart has some funding issues, we know that. So, having said all that, I do understand the concept of giving an additional monies to Hart from our budget to keep the services going, to meet the constituents' needs. But, before we look at allocating this 2.6 million more dollars to Hart above and beyond the 2.35, I think there's something that I need to say and put into a motion, if you don't mind.
Okay. Thank you.
While it's important to ensure the continued Hart services to those in our community who depend on public transit, the following three prerequisites should be satisfied before the county commission considers additional funding for Hart. I'm going to put something in here that's probably going to shock the Hart board members a little bit. So, this is my motion. One, to search and select for a permanent Hart executive director. To expedite the process, a statewide search should be undertaken first and foremost, before a nationwide service, which is a search which is expensive, neth the national search. So, I think that the first thing we need to do is have a statewide search. Number two, the completion of a fiscal substantial operating plan for Hart by the new executive director for the county commission's consideration, along with all of the other unfunded needs of the county after the results of the November election. And three, any funding provided to Hart by this board should be on a condition that a contribution to the city of Tampa is made. And that's my motion.
Thank you. And we do have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. Commissioner White, you're next in the queue.
Well, I wholeheartedly support your motion, Commissioner Miller, and if I've understood your statement correctly, you might be lending reconsideration to the idea of a search for the director. And that's something, that's really something for the Hart board.
I said that in there, but I think the nationwide, the statewide search should be first.
Yes. So, I do, is the spirit of the motion to sort of park these dollars, you know, with a line item such that it could potentially be used, you know, for Hart at some future time, if those conditions are met?
That is not the spirit. That is what the motion said. I should have put it probably different than that. But, yes, it is to, if we pass this 2.6 million, it will be sitting there contingent upon these items within our budget, within our budget being met.
How would budget staff budget those dollars exactly? What would the line item look like? Or how would it read?
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. Tom Fesler, Management, Budget Department. We'd probably do it similar to the way we did it last year with the 2.35. There was a condition put on those funds also, that Hart would come back with a plan. So, in this circumstance, we would appropriate the funds, they'd be budgeted, but they would not be released to Hart until they met each of those conditions. And so, they would be included probably in our governmental area of the budget.
Is there a timeline, a proposed timeline, on when those conditions would have to be met?
Well, part of it would fall on the Hart's board, and that is getting a search firm to start the statewide search as soon as possible. That would be, probably take place after we have an August meeting deciding, the board deciding what's where they're going to go. That would be upon the board hiring a new executive director. I'm not saying that Mr. Siewett would not be that executive director. If he wants the job, he would have to apply. So, once that happens, and the new Hart director would complete a fiscal sustainable operating plan for us to see, then those dollars are met. Also, we'd be asking the city of Tampa to add it up to the table.
I'd like to listen to further board member comments. I think I would like to see some type of a timeline in place, you know, kind of a hard and fast, you know, deadline, which those would have to be met. Maybe it's a fiscal year, maybe it's half a fiscal year. I don't know. I'd like to listen to what some of the commissioners...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner White, Commissioner White, you sit on the Hart board. With my motion, that board would have to determine when and what date they want to have a new executive director hired.
But, then we would also be at the mercy of the Tampa City Council in determining whether or not they would want to make an appropriation. So, that's where I think it would be appropriate to have some kind of a hard and fast deadline to say, look, this has got to happen by XYZ period of time, because, you know, we have important priorities that we could put those dollars to use for, you know. So, we would want to know that there's a firm commitment to get that done by the Hart board and/or the Tampa City Council. That's just my thought process.
Well, and if I could weigh in, obviously, there, the city council elections and the mayor election are going to weigh, I think it'd be prudent to just say over, in the next fiscal year. Because the process for a CEO, they come on board, they have to get acclimated, you know, you're talking like six, nine, maybe 12 months. And I don't want to shortchange the proposal, because I think this is a really well-thought-out. Thank you very much for your leadership, Commissioner Miller, on doing this, because this is what we need at Hart. We need to show some leadership and really move these items. But, my feelings would be that we should look at a fiscal year. But, I'll wait and hear, there's some, Commissioner Kemp is in...
Do I still have the floor before you move to Commissioner Kemp? So, I'll just close in saying that I'm going to go ahead and support the motion on the floor. But, what I'd like to ask of staff is that if these dollars haven't been spent in the upcoming fiscal year, assuming that this passes, I'd like to see this come back as a highlighted item for next year's budget versus just rolled into the budget.
That's a very good request. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes. Thank you. As you all know, as I've said many times before, Hillsborough County has the most underfunded transit agency for a community of this size in the nation by a long shot. We are critically, just stunningly, underfunded. In Florida, only Pinellas and Hillsborough Counties rely so heavily on an Advalorm, or rely almost exclusively on an Advalorm set aside. The attitude has been that the Advalorm set aside, the millage that's set aside, is a ceiling, a revenue ceiling. We've seen the results of that. We have the poorest transit system in the nation, the most, I should say, the most underfunded transit system in the nation. Despite that, some 35,000 people rely on rides on our transit every single day. While Pinellas is also underfunded in the state of Florida, they do have three-quarter, they have three-quarter mil, and they have one-third the land coverage. Three-quarter mil, one-third the land coverage. Hart has a half mil to cover three times as much land. Other Florida counties, every one but Hillsborough and Pinellas, use a mix of funds to cover transit, including countywide funds. For example, Orange County gave $45 million in countywide general revenue to transit in 2018. That's countywide revenue, $45 million, Orange County. Broward County gave $36 million in countywide general revenue to transit. Their transit budget for Broward County, which isn't that much bigger than us, was over $100 million compared to our $40 million local contribution. That's because they gave huge amounts of gas tax, local gas tax, to transit in Broward County. They have something like three times the number of buses we have, but 1.8 million people compared to our 1.4 million people. As to the match by the city of Tampa, I think that city of Tampa could be doing more for this, for sure. I know that they are making some contributions with the downtowner and some of that money. But, I would like to point out that of our countywide funds, 40% of them come from the city of Tampa, and a, well, 39%, I think, and then another 1% from Temple Terrace and Plant City combined. But, Plant City is not a contributor at all to even the, they've elected not to be the only place to opt out of contributing in millage to the county. Last year, we did give Hart $2.4 million for operations. The revenue was used for operations. This included more frequency on Route 34, that's Hillsborough Avenue, a major line with many connections, moving through unincorporated Hillsborough and Tampa. The increase in frequency has been accompanied by a high increase in ridership. For example, compared June 2017, ridership on that route is now 18.2% higher. It's amazing. That's what other communities are doing. We have too few of our very strong routes that are running at 15 minutes. Other places look at 5 minutes and 10 minutes. For bus riders, frequency is freedom. This is an economic development issue. This is a social issue. If you miss the bus and can expect another one to come soon, it makes all the difference for travel times and your connections. These are the kind of results that we can achieve, the ones we did on Hillsborough Avenue, when we fund operations. I will remind you, too, that the routes that we funded last year, nearly every one was within the city of Tampa or Temple Terrace and in making connections with, unincorporated. The suggestions that I have moving forward, although that would be something that could come... come from Hart, could be vetted by the Hart board and approved by this board, the suggestions all run and serve both city of Tampa, city of Temple Terrace, and, or one of them serves city of Temple Terrace, and they all connect, again, with unincorporated Hillsborough County. And again, 40% of the revenue from our countywide funds that this comes from, comes from the city of Tampa already and comes from Temple Terrace, a small percent from Temple Terrace. So those are, I think it's very important. I can show, I guess, you know, because this is up for discussion, I just want to show you some of the things that we could do. I'd like to have, I have a slide prepared here. This investment, I think, is critically important, that we start really taking seriously what we're doing at Hart. This is, you all know, Raquel.
Is this an extensive, long presentation?
No, it's a short one. Just wanna, since we, since this has been pulled. This is some of the things we could do. Route 22nd Street, it's, or Route 12 on 22nd Street, it's one of our busiest routes. I'm hearing that not everybody can even fit on the buses that are using that route now. Serves unincorporated Hillsborough County, city of Tampa, and bring it to 15-minute frequency. USF E-Bohr to downtown. Keep going. Here we go. 30, Kennedy Boulevard, bring it, if we were to bring it to 20-minute frequency downtown to the airport, which I've heard so much about. Next one, Martin Luther King on 32, bring to 20-minute frequency. Net Park, a job center, so important that we, that we serve that center and provide opportunities for our residents connecting MLK to the airport. I've taken that myself from the airport a few times. Route 39, Bush Boulevard. Again, 20-minute frequency, serving Temple Terrace, Bush Gardens, and to Citrus Park. And then finally, this University Connector Route 32, North Loop, bidirectional. This could provide the second direction on that, which would really be a great service. Again, we lack the kind of service we need in the university area. This, again, is a small contribution. I hate to, I mean, in terms of transit and what we could be doing, I think we should have been doing this all along. But I hate to have it predicated, and I understand, Commissioner Miller, where you're going with that, but I think that we should, that those things can all be decided and moved forward by the Hart board without tying our hands in terms of just giving us the barest minimum of critical service that we could use. And again, it's a social issue. It's a service to people. It brings people to their jobs. It's an economic development issue, and it's really best practices and what we should be doing. It's what every other county in Florida is doing. And again, 40% or 38, 39% of the countywide funds that we collect come from the city of Tampa.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I know that it's up in the air still, they're in the process of gathering signatures, and then it's got to pass the judgment and muster of the voters in November, but with this referendum and this tax increase on sales, as I understand, a good portion of that would be going to Hart. And I think that, I understand Commissioner Kemp's concern about getting people to and from the workplace, but, you know, with that, you've got affordable housing issues. And I, you know, you're gonna use these excess funds, it should be something to be considered in the next cycle for affordable housing. But I'm not gonna support this 2.6 million today, and we'll make a motion that we, I guess would say decline this, or turn down this flagged item.
Well, we already have a motion on the floor that you seconded from Commissioner Miller, and we haven't voted on that yet. We're still in discussion. So we can come back to you afterward and dispose of that motion. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not on the Hart board, but Commissioner Miller's motion made a lot of sense to me. At the same time, I think Commissioner Higginbotham makes an excellent point. I'm not involved in the ballot initiative. I have not been briefed on the ballot initiative. But my understanding from media reports is that 45% of the revenue generated would go to Hart. Simply put, it would not be prudent to use county revenues for transit if a dedicated funding source for Hart is approved. That would clearly be the appropriate source for these transit dollars, in my mind. So I don't know how or if we should incorporate what Commissioner Higginbotham suggested or if that needs to be a second motion, but I think that should be considered in the process. I think that should be considered. A lot of ifs in there, but clearly, if a dedicated funding source is created with 45% of the revenue going to the transit agency, that should be the source.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. To speak to the ballot initiative, it's very unclear whether the number of needed signatures will be collected, first off, and there's other challenges that they are expecting. I think it would be totally reasonable expectation that if the ballot initiative, if it was put on the ballot and passed, yes, of course, we should be using our countywide dollars for other sources. That would totally make sense, and I'm sure that that would occur. Barring that, we need an infusion, and this is a very small one, of investment in Hart at this point. We need to take responsibility for this, and I think it's, you know, that's a very shaky proposition, but of course, if we were able to get the revenue and start employing it from the ballot initiative, it would make total sense to make this investment and not have this investment of countywide dollars any longer. But I think we could look at that, at that time.
Thank you. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
I don't know if Commissioner Miller would want to include something about the ballot passing the new tax.
Well, part of my motion, second part, says a completion of a fiscal sustainable operating plan for Hart by the new executive directors.
Okay.
And it said, along with all of the other, of the, all of the other unfunded needs of the county after the results of the November election. That's, that was part of the motion.
I think that take, except it doesn't exactly spell out that we can't use any funds until after. I mean, it does exactly say that. It mentions the ballot initiative. I don't know if you want to offer an amendment, but you're fine. Okay. I see no further discussion in the queue. Is there any further comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. Without further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay.
So what you have remaining then is the additional funding requests, if you want to consider those, for the enterprising Latinas project and the university area circulator service.
I'll just make a few comments on these because I've been involved in the Wyomama Ruskin project. I really feel that we don't have a whole lot going on out in unincorporated for transportation. And we need to build ridership. It's very, very important. I'd like to see us approve these requests. They could come out of the 2.3 million that we're already allocating to Hart. But I think, I think that these are two important projects. I don't like, I like, I support Commissioner Higginbotham and what he has said in regards to the recurring funding for the USF project. I don't think, I think these are pilots, and they need to be pilots. Pilots are one-year projects, unless they can't be completed, and then I'm sure you would come back to this board, Mr. Merrill, and tell us. So do you want to make some comments?
Yeah, the university circulator service is a pilot. It just happens to be a three-year pilot because FDOT had proposed it that way.
Okay.
But as I understand it, and I'm not intimately involved, but I know, I think I know enough to at least represent that, what I've heard from Mark Sharp is that it is a three-year limited project. At the end of three years, that whole district has got to move beyond where it is anyway. And so if it's not, if in three years they haven't really moved the ball further, there are other issues besides just the circulator. So I mean, I'd offer that as kind of the explanation for why they're, why they're talking about three years instead of one. But at least they're leveraging other dollars. I think that's a good thing, both private and public dollars to help fund this thing.
Right. That's great. Okay, in the queue is Commissioner Miller. You're recognized.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I was gonna address the university area circulator, I think, I don't think. I know that Mr. Merrill has hit it on the head. I've met with former county Commissioner Sharp, and we discussed this extensively in being a three-year project. And I think one of the things he said, that its plan for three-year project may not have to be a three-year project, if I recall that conversation with him. So I think Mr. Merrill has hit it right on the head. So therefore, I want to make a motion that we adopt the Wyomama Ruskin Transit Project and the university area circulator service, and that those monies do not come out of the 2.3 billion dollars for Hart.
It not come out of the two point. Okay. We have motion on the floor by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
I just want to say that I'm very familiar with the project and what Mark is trying to do. When I did this 20 years ago, we got a little seed money from the state for a 24-month period of time. It helped us leverage significant private sector money, which replaced the state money, and allowed us to run a circulator for almost 10 years. And that's what kicked off the bus transit north of Fowler Avenue until Hart could expand, and this board could work with Hart to expand that bus system at the time. We built the bus transit, mass transit terminal there off of 131st across from the VA Hospital with state money so that we could accommodate the circulator and the Hart system when they finally did and were able to move up there. So Mr. Merrill is right, and Mark is right, that it takes a little seed money to get the private money going, and the private money is there. I know it's there because we've done it before. And if they can't get that going like it had been done before, then it doesn't deserve to continue on. But at this point, I think this is the right thing to do.
Great. Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I didn't receive a specific briefing, but I saw the, and I talked a little to the enterprising Latinas, and they've done a good job, I think, of really trying to make something happen there, and I'd like to see that happen. Certainly, Mark Sharp has been, I think, to see everybody and explain and worked very hard on putting that together. I'd love it to be a model for other circulators and totally support these projects, and definitely think that we need to, again, be funding and working to help to start more transit countywide and not to take any resources from Hart.
Okay. See no other comments in the queue. We have motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to approve the additional funding requests. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, please accord your votes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
So with that, and no other motions on the flag list, then I'm assuming the remaining 3.925 million would be held until September, and then you would decide how to allocate those dollars. Okay.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Actually, I, I do have one question about the remaining 3.9 million, and it, it might involve asking if I can add an additional flagged item to the list. You know, I didn't ask staff for any flagged items because I thought, per the last meeting, and maybe I just misunderstood the discussion, that, that we had committed to just leave all of these additional dollars unappropriated. So, you know, I just, you know, didn't have those conversations with staff. I'm, I'm probably a bit premature in putting this out there, but I want to put it out there. You know, just because, you know, if it does happen, if it does come to fruition, it would be a major legacy for Hillsborough County. And that is that Two Rivers Ranch, in the northern portion of the county, is in play, if you will, for conservation. We've been talking with, myself and county staff have been talking with the Thomas family, and I think there's a real interest there in a conservation easement over the ranch. So I'm not talking about, you know, a fee simple acquisition, but a real chance at a conservation easement. If that were to happen, that would connect Hillsborough River State Park with the former Cone Ranch, which is, which we're now calling Lower Green Swamp. And that would create, if I'm not mistaken, a 60-plus-thousand-acre wildlife corridor, which would be a real legacy for this county. That's what I, that's what I'm aiming towards in the, in the 1 million that I've already asked for in this budget for ELAP acquisition. Of course, again, stressing that it would be a conservation easement in this case. And looking at a possible funding scenario, it would likely involve, if we can make it happen, something to the effect of county contribution. SWIFTMUD would likely be a player. State dollars could perhaps be in play, whether that's, you know, from a source like Florida Forever or Rural and Family Lands program. And we would envision that the remaining quarter would come in the form of some type of, for lack of a better term, a gifting to the county for a portion of the funds. I think there's a real commitment to do that. I think there's a real will. I think the 1 million that I've already asked for, in addition to what's already budgeted in the ELAP program, would probably get us close for the county portion, but probably not quite there. So what I'd like to ask the board for is whether or not you would consider taking 500,000 from this bottom line and put an additional 500,000 to ELAP for, you know, we would, we would label it as ELAP acquisition, but, you know, the idea would be that, you know, we have our eye on the ball for Two Rivers. So I'll make a motion to take 500,000 of that and put it as additional ELAP funding.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
I think this is very insightful. I think it's an aggressive step forward to do what needs to be done, especially looking at the growth of this county and protecting and preserving land in a smart way that allows for us to have connectivity to the resources we already have in place, allowing us to leverage what we have with what we hope to gain in the future. I think that this is an incredibly ingenious idea and support it wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just want to thank you for bringing that forward, Commissioner White, and supportive. I'd like to learn, of course, more about it and understand it better, but I'm certainly all-in to do more of this. So I think it's a wonderful idea.
Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
And I'm not gonna support it because I'd like more information on it, and again, my consistent attitude and vote on flagged items or earmarks. But with this additional funds between now and September, I'd like to hear from additional funds between now and September, I'd like to hear from staff on any remedies that could be done with affordable housing, not the trust fund, but with affordable housing, and maybe there's some way we can bring relief to those who I see in great need. So that's my position, but I won't support the motion at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Well, I understand where Commissioner White's going with this, but I also want to ask Mr. Merrill. We have a presentation concerning, that will be coming forth concerning children's services and affordable housing, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's going to tell us exactly if there's a need financially, well, we know it's a need for affordable housing, no doubt about that, but also for children's services?
That's correct, yes.
I, I'd rather wait to see what that presentation would be on those two issues before we spend any more monies for, out of these, these dollars. I think that, that's a dying need for affordable housing. We need affordable housing in this, in this county. The state has let us down so many times, and they're not going to bite the bullet. They're going to take away, and we need to do something about it. Plus, the mere fact is that we're talking about our number-one natural resource, being our children. I understand what we need concerning the, the ELAP program and what needs to go there, but I think before we do that, we need to hear what Mr. Merrill's staff is going to say about those two issues. So I'm not going to support the motion at this particular point in time. I'm going to wait until after we hear those, and then go from there.
And Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
I actually agree that any leftover monies we have should go directly to affordable housing. Mr. Merrill, how much do we have in the budget now? I understand we've got, what, 6 million in the budget for affordable housing? Do we get it up to that point? Because when you and I spoke, that was our goal, was to try to get up to there at least.
There is 3 million currently, and then we had thought that 2 million of this remaining surplus would be-
The remaining surplus is how much?
3.9, and so 2 million more towards affordable housing would get us to a total of 5, which is halfway to the 10, and then the other 5 million would be in-kind, kinds of contributions to get to the total 10.
So if we did 3 out of the remaining 4-
Yes.
-and added it to the 3, that would give us 6, and if we did the remaining 4 and in-kind, then we'd hit the 10 mark?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I, I have to speak up, because I cannot support that.
I'm not, I'm not making a motion, but I'm just saying that hypothetically, that's the way it could go.
Yes.
I support what Commissioner White brought up, because it gets the ball going sooner than later on something that's going to take quite a bit of time to put together, and rather than kick that can down the line and miss an opportunity, I'd like to get it going and allow him to get it going sooner than later. And 500,000 out of that 4 million leaves about 3.5 million to play with. For me, I would support every nickel of it going to affordable housing. For others, you may have different priorities, but at, at a later date, when we enter that discussion, that's what I'm going to be working towards.
I mean, I also, we have grants. I mean, we receive grants. I mean, you don't understand, this is, it's not just an influx of new revenue that's going into affordable housing that can only be counted. There's grants, there's in-kind. I mean, the fact that they spent 13 million last year, that wasn't all revenue from our general revenue fund. A lot of it was grants. So I think you're looking at it very narrowly in saying, the only way I can do this is to put our general revenue there, and I have to tell you, we are being mandated by the federal government to change our children's services program, and we're going to need funds for that. Taking 3 million of this, you might as well just let it grow weeds out at Lake Mag, because that's what's going to happen. We've got to put some capital in there, and actually, the 2.6 million, technically, Mr. Merrill, is that being left in the budget?
I'm sorry?
Is the 2.6 million for Hart being left in the budget?
Based on your action, it will be appropriated pending the satisfaction of those conditions, yeah.
Okay, I understand that. We all know not all that money's going to be spent this year, because we're probably into a process of six to nine months before these can, conditions can be met. So I, I think we've got some funds here to work with, but please, don't disturb what's on the bottom line right now, because we need it for affordable housing and children's services. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Quick question, Mr. Merrill. The 3.925 dollars we have now, those dollars came back from our property appraiser concerning, basically, with the increase in property values, am I, am I correct? Or something along those lines? So my question is, these are one-time funds, they're not recurring? Right?
Um, the, the 8 million dollars that we started with was the result of increased property tax values, so that would be recurring, those would be recurring dollars.
Okay.
Time is that correct?
Let me, let me ask-
Until the referendum, yeah.
Let me, yeah, to what?
Until the homestead referendum.
In the homestead, let's just be, let's just say the homestead referendum passes, then what?
Well, if the homestead referendum passes and the, well, let's just take that one. If, if that passes, then we've shown you projections that, that really indicate we're going to have a hard time if we continue the same, in the same fashion, paying for capital needs as well as ongoing operating needs.
So, and our whole thought process, I think, since that, that initiative came out of the, the brilliant minds of our legislature to put this on the ballot, we have been very cautious about what we're doing, because we are anticipating that will pass. So like I said before, these are one-time dollars. It's just like when in the legislature, you're plugging non-recurring dollars in a recurring budget, and you come back the next year, and your hole gets bigger and bigger. Let's be able to mind for that. So my thing, again, is I think we need to wait until we hear from Mr. Merrill's staff, and they come back and talk about children's services and affordable housing, and before we do anything else with these dollars. So I'm, I'm going to stick to that.
Okay, Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
And with the action that we're considering here, does it the ELAP program? Couldn't we go to the ELAP program and get those funds without coming to the, to our general fund here?
Commissioner White-
I suppose if additional millage is levied, I think as it stands today, though, they, they, you know.
Are they tapped out?
There's a little bit of funding remaining in, from existing, existing sources, but yes, I mean, the, the whole idea of the ELAP program, which was approved by voters, is to pay for ELAP acquisitions, and so, to that extent, you're, you're right, there, there is that source that was approved by voters.
So we do have a potential for another source?
If, if, if it's levied by this board, correct?
Yes, there would have to be millage levied that was voter-approved, right?
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to pass the gavel and make a motion, a substitute motion.
Commissioner Murman, you're recognized.
Or an amendment to the, no, I'm going to make amendment to the motion, that the 500,000 will come out of the Hart allocation of 2.6 million, because we won't be able to spend all that by the time we're done with all the items that we have for them. So the, so it will be 2.1 million going to Hart, 500,000 would go to ELAP, and that's my amendment.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, clerk will open the board for a vote.
It's on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Higginbotham, Kemp, and Miller voted no.
Okay, so now we're back on the motion as amended, and the motion was made by Commissioner Miller, Commissioner White, I'm sorry, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Higginbotham, Kemp, and Miller voted no.
All right, I think that concludes the flag list actions that remain, all that remains is just to adopt the TRIM.
Right, and I need to read-
Yes.
-the motion-
Correct, yes.
-to set the TRIM millage, and I will pass the gavel to make this motion. I move that we set the following proposed operating and debt service millages for the purpose of the TRIM notices, and set the date, time, and place of the first public hearing on the Hillsborough County Fiscal Year 2019 budget. Countywide millages, operating, general revenue fund, 5.7309 mills. Debt service, environmentally sensitive lands, .0604 mills. Total countywide millage, 5.7913 mills. Non-countywide millages, operating, general purpose municipal services taxing unit, 4.3745 mills. Library Services District, .5583 mills. Debt service, parks and recreation bonds, .0259 mills. The proposed percent change of the aggregate millage rate from the aggregate rollback millage rate as defined by state statute is an increase of 6.18%, as is shown on line 27, Department of Revenue Form, DR-420. The date, time, and place of the first public hearing on the budget will be Thursday, September 13, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Frederick, Frederick B. Carl County Center, Second Floor Board Room 601, East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida 33602. By approving this motion, the appropriate official is authorized to execute the necessary Department of Revenue forms, and that's the motion.
So moved?
Okay, we have a motion, and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, a clerk will open the board for a vote on the motion.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Nothing else? Nope, that concludes our actions today. Thank you very much.
Is there any further business? Okay, we are adjourned.